And I would like to call to order the November 7th meeting of the Manchester Select Board. You know, we'll call vote of those in attendance, John Round.
Yes.
Kathy Bellata. Brian Solacy.
Yes.
Ann Harrison. And Becky Jakes. Okay, first of all, any public comments of items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, moving right along. We'll go ahead and get started with the continuation of the tree hearing. I'm sorry to say Tom is not feeling well. But he did recommend after he and I guess Corey looked at the tree that it is quite diseased and does need to come down. Wait a minute. This is open the continuation of the tree hearing of 41 Pleasant Street. Have a motion. Second.
Second.
Roll call vote to Ann Harrison. Brian Solacy. Kathy Bellata. John Round.
Yes.
Becky Jakes says yes. Okay, so I'll repeat. Tom is unfortunately ill, but did state that upon inspection, the tree is quite ailing and should be taken down. So may I have a motion to approve the removal of the tree at 41 Pleasant Street?
So move.
Second. Okay, move by John Round, seconded by Ann Harrison. Roll call vote, John Round.
Yes.
Kathy Bellata.
Yes.
Brian Solacy.
Yes.
Ann Harrison. Becky Jakes says yes, it's unanimous. Okay. Committee interview of Tom Parkinson for the FinCom.
Before we go through the interview, I ask the question.
Sure.
I apologize for not asking this when we received the resignation of Mr. Well. Was this position posted on social media or the newspaper, the opening? I looked for it and I, I subscribe to everything and I, there's probably there's somewhere, but I couldn't see it.
I'm not recalling, so I don't, perhaps not.
That's a good point. Procedurally, it should.
I mean, I, nothing about the candidate in front of us seems wonderful, but striving for transparency and, no.
You announced the vacancy, but I don't know if we'd probably.
Just for some of the other ones, we would post on, you know, the Twitter and the Facebook. Hey, if an open physician, would you like to volunteer?
No, I think that's a good point. And, and it, it, it should follow normal procedures. Is Mr. Parkinson's, I see.
Bye folks.
Right, and Sarah has her hand up, but let's, I, I think we should not hear from Mr. Parkinson's at this time until we've had an opportunity for others or since he's here, go ahead.
Can I speak to that?
Yeah, I have no issue with interviewing him as long.
Just a moment, please, Sarah.
Yeah, I, if he's here, I, I think it's fine if we speak with him. I just would suggest that we have an open period where we call for volunteers for just maybe a week. I mean, and just if anyone else is interested, they throw their hat in the ring and think we could interview them at our next meeting.
And how about the rest of the board? How does the rest of the board feel? John?
Yeah, when, when is Mark's resignation effective?
It's effective now.
Yeah. Okay, so the Finance Committee is down.
Uh huh. Can you hear from Sarah?
Yeah, but I want to hear from the board.
Okay.
I want to hear what Sarah has to say, honestly.
I would like to hear from Sarah.
Okay, Sarah Melish.
Yeah, um, so the Finance Committee has never advertised its positions on social media. So if you're now changing the rules, that does put us at a disadvantage. We start our budget sessions with the department heads next week. It's crucial for us to have a new member on board to participate through the full round of the budget discussions. Mark did a lot of due diligence, finding somebody to replace him to fill the balance of his term, which is up in June of 2023. So this is a short-term situation that we're trying to cover. And it's, it's, I've never been told as a committee chair that when I have a vacancy, there's a certain procedure I need to follow regarding putting things on social media, putting it on the town website. It clearly was in a select board meeting that Mark had designed.
Technically, that's not a, not your level, not the committee level.
So, because I had, that, that's the cause for my confusion is that I have seen other vacancies posted, not just on social media, so it's not a social media thing, but in the newspaper, there have been calls for volunteers. And, and so I'm just, this is a really important committee. And, and I just feel that whatever we do, it should be consistent. So while this may be a consistent process used in the past for finance, it, it's not consistent with what we've been doing for some other committees, I think. And, and I just feel if one of our goals is to be transparent and improve that relationship with the town, this is another way of being transparent, is asking people to volunteer.
I think consistency, at least at this point, has been, if there's no obvious candidates or nobody's raising their hand, you start to publicize. So I think that is probably the process we've gone through. It's not like it's automatic, there's an opening, you advertise whether you have people or not. If somebody's raising their hand, I think they are filling that position in all of the committees.
For appointments.
I might suggest that when we started, when we started advertising, it was basically we're very, well.
Generally, that it's a committee that's down a couple of people when it has no candidates.
So, and, and once again, I'm just going back on my professional life is that when employees mentioned a lack of transparency around promotions or how physicians are filled, they usually made mention of the fact that physician openings were not posted openly and transparently. So I will just make that, you know, I, like, once again, I'm not even sure what the candidate in, in front of us, it's just about the process and is it consistent with the values we, we articulated or I thought we articulated.
Ann?
I I see a difference between a professional paid physician and some of this, and a volunteer who's stepping up and who has been frankly recruited.
And we do need to speak up just a little bit.
I might make the point with Ann that maybe this falls into the policy category. I think we're probably silent on this, but maybe something should be put together along those lines. I'm not necessarily advocating what particular process it should be at this point, but maybe this speaks to that.
We recently approved a policy on appointments.
Yeah.
So perhaps we need to revisit it.
Put an addendum on it or something, yeah.
And then this, this position is just fulfilling a balance of a, of a term, correct? So it comes back up in June of 23 anyway.
Yeah.
So at this point, we're kind of under the gun, I think with Sarah saying, we're under the gun as far as getting the process started. He was recruited, you know, and then I think that as we, we revisit the policy for 23.
So I agree with that. I, my question would be though, or my understanding is if we appoint this person for the balance of Mr. Well's term, that the position doesn't automatically open up at the end of that term? Or does it, does the, so do we, we don't publicize that it's open, right? It's just.
This one is, it will end at the, at, in June of 23.
And will it be publicized?
So well, that's, and that's to John's point in terms of tightening this up. Policies on appointments. Greg, do we have any formalized policy on that?
Yes.
I mean, board, is it consistent board to board?
It's, it's a general policy for all appointments.
Which, in terms of, of publicizing?
No, there is no mention of publicizing. How do we go about appointing?
So then do, as John said, do we need to formalize this, tighten it up and include it in the policy?
I think so.
Okay. But I think at this point, I think let's, we, I think we can go ahead and go forward with this, in my opinion.
I, I agree, and I would just like a firm take, Greg, by when we expect to have some follow-up on this? Kind of, you know, by when could we expect to see, you know, some draft addendum to the policy?
Well, that's our policy people.
Okay, well, I just, I don't want to leave it open-ended is my only point. Not in a rush to see it next week, I just don't want to leave it open-ended, so.
Okay, so now we're going, I'm going to come back to this in just a moment. And, but before I do, we need to go back and close the public hearing for the tree hearing. So we have a motion to close the public hearing of the 41 Pleasant Street tree hearing. Moved by Brian Solacy. Seconded by Kathy Bellata. Roll call vote, John Round.
Yes.
Kathy Bellata.
Yes.
Brian Solacy.
Yes.
Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Becky Jakes says yes, it's unanimous. So now I am going to make a note and I will reach out to, or can John and, and, okay, great. So knowing that.
I, I think there are, I think there are two things that have been mentioned.
Yes.
One is making open physicians public. And the other is, do we consider the end of someone's term to be an open physician? In the past, we have usually just reappointed. And I just, this has come up, I'd like a little sense of what the board has to do.
I'm making notes. May I ask that we think on this a little bit? And then individually email Ann on this? And individually email John so that we're not in violation of open meeting laws, form, et cetera? And, and give some feedback on that question and do it within the next week. How's that sound? Is everybody amenable, agreeable with that? Okay, now going forward. Tom Parkinson, how are you today, this evening?
Just fine.
Lost interest.
I'm still here.
Yay. Okay. We do have some information, but why don't you tell us a little bit about you and the strengths that you would bring to FinCom, please?
Well, I like to think I've already sort of contributed here by clarifying town policy on, on committee members, so there's what. Well, my wife and I live on right in Manchester, on Woodhull Circle. We've been there for 12 years. I have two daughters in town, both of, one is a college freshman, they're both have attended Manchester Essex High School. I run a financial services firm, it's my own company. Been in financial services since I graduated Michigan State back in 1983. 11 years at Fidelity, seven years at Schwab, couple of years at other spots, and then about 15 years ago, started my own independent financial services firm here, my office is in Hamilton. So I think I bring a lot of expertise in that regard. I also am Chair of the Finance Committee for my church. I think, you know, to be honest, my shortcomings are a bit of naivete with respect to town politics and how all the committees work together and everybody gets things done. So a bit of handholding there is probably going to be needed, but I think, you know, my expert experience probably outweighs that. So that's kind of a short synopsis of who I am. 62 years old, if anybody wants to know that. And ready to help Mark out and complete his term.
Thank you. I'll go around to the board members now. John Round?
Okay, Tom, thanks, thanks for raising your hand. I, I, I won't ask just how much Mark twisted your arm on this. I assume you, you came through him and, and you know him. Is this your first time through working with a, a public board? And what prompted you to do this?
It is, it's my first time.
Okay, what prompted you to do this besides Mark's suggestion, I assume?
Well, it's mostly for Mark, to be honest with you, but, you know, I also look at is it an opportunity to kind of get my toes wet and see if there's something I can contribute to the town? So, like I said, my learning curve on the town politics and the interactions of the various committees and so forth inside of the town is probably fairly steep, but it's an opportunity for me to kind of take a look and see where I can contribute.
Well, we all appreciate your interest very much.
Kathy Bellata.
Thank you again. I reiterate my thanks as well for stepping up and as somebody who's also new to this, I, I understand where you're coming from. But I thank you for agreeing to serve. And I just have one question, you certainly have quite the financial background. I was wondering if you also had any operational leadership experience, specifically leading large organizations, large budgets yourself? That's a little bit different than financial services per se, so I just wanted to get a better understanding of your background.
Well, I've, I've never really been on the management side of the financial services business. I've been more in the sales, product management, production side and general management for my own firm. From a management perspective, yeah, that's, I don't have that experience. But again, I think, you know, financial services and understanding of the financial services on numbers work is probably my strong suit here, so.
And that includes like FPNA type of forecasting, et cetera?
Well, I do do some of that work, you know, part of what I do for my company is I manage a handful of 401k plans in the area at the institutional level. So I'm actively involved with helping them in their budgeting and working through their the important benefit, the retirement benefit and fitting that into their budgets. Many of the organizations, I can't name names, but many of them are right in Manchester by the sea and a couple others in local communities around the area. So, you know, there is some institutional management experience and some budgeting in that regard, if that's helpful.
It is, thank you very much.
Brian Solacy?
Not much, I mean, as long as you can balance a checkbook, I think you're a great candidate.
Yeah, well, you have to ask my wife though, sometimes that doesn't work out too well.
But I think that the reference that you bring, I think people have spoken about you, it works for me.
By the way, all of this was disclosed on the application too, I'm sure you folks have gotten that, so that's, you can refer back there as well.
Thank you. Ann Harrison?
How is your work with your church different from your professional work?
Very little, actually. You know, we work with a variety of committees there. I was, you know, a member of the Finance Committee for a long time. I'm involved in the Endowment Committee. There's, you know, all of the interactions we have with fundraising and various other committees within the church. So I don't think it's terribly different, to be honest, but again, I'm comparing that to no experience on the governmental side, small town politics side. So once I get into it, I would venture a guess, it's probably very similar.
I was looking to see if, if the church had competing demands for funds.
Oh yes, of course, you know, it's community outreach services, there's all kinds of other things, we need cash, you know, operational cash, capital budgets. The more than, not coming to my mind right now, but there, there are lots of needs within the church, as a matter of fact. By looking at what's going on in Manchester by the sea, the similarity there is having more needs than funds exists. And that's, right now, we're going through quite a bit of a, a number crunch in terms of operational funds at the church and COVID-related. You know, the church attendance is down, so plate collections and a variety of other things are down. So we've had to dip into our endowment in a way we haven't been able to or had to in the past. So again, I think the operations and the surface, probably very similar.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. I guess my, my main question is time availability for this, especially coming into fiscal year '24, planning. Do you, do you have a enough time to be able to put into this?
Well, that's a good question, and I think the answer to that is I can only do my best. There are, it has come up rather suddenly. It wasn't something that I had budgeted for in terms of time for, you know, my, my 2022 year. I do have a hard kind of Monday night thing, which I've pushed aside today. So Mondays are difficult in the evening, that will be freed up after the end of the year. Aside from that, my, my calendar should be pretty flexible, especially given we can do these things via Zoom. So I don't see much of a difficulty going forward, as long as my Mondays are not, you know, taken up on a weekly basis going forward between now and the end of the year, I think that I should be able to find the time to do it.
And did you and Mark or you and Sarah Melish talk about the time that would be needed?
We did, we had, I went and met with Sarah at her home and we talked about, you know, the, the meetings ramping up, you know, towards the end of the year because of the budgeting cycle that's going on right now, or beginning to go on right now. I did indicate to Sarah at that time that, you know, Mondays were a hard kind of no for me because of prior commitments. And there's a couple of dates going forward too. One is a wedding in Florida next week for my nephew and, you know, things like that that are in my calendar going through the end of the year. But again, I think that other than Mondays and those handful of other dates like the wedding, I should be able to fit the meetings in. And I even, even again, there is an example, being in Florida for the wedding, it's not going to be a Friday night wedding or a Monday night wedding, so I'm sure that I'd be able to do that.
Okay, well, thank you very much for being willing to step up. Is, are there any other questions from the board? Ready to make a motion?
I move to approve the nomination of John Parkinson, who's running to term in June 23.
Right. Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by John Round. Roll call vote, please, Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Becky Jakes says yes, unanimous. Thank you very much, Tom, and best to Linda.
Well, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Thanks for your time, folks.
We appreciate your time, thank you.
Okay, take care.
Okay. Next up, we have an appointment to Harvard Advisory Committee. And let's John Round, would you like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to nominate Skip Crocker.
Do I have a second? Roll call vote, John Round, moved by John Round, seconded by Kathy Bellata. Roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata? Brian Solacy?
No.
Ann Harrison?
No.
Becky Jakes says yes, three to two, Skip, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. So I, I think that next up will be, you'll be hearing from Carl Dunn. Welcome to Harvard Advisory Committee. Thank you. Okay. Next, we have Michael Coyne for Parks and Rec, Representative to CPC. This will be to fill Sean Daly's remaining term through June of 2023. Any questions on this? Okay. Motion to approve the appointment of Michael Coyne as the Park and Rec Committee Representative to CPC through June of 2023?
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata? John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jakes says yes, thank you, Michael Coyne. All right, next up. Well, we have to wait for that agenda item, so moving ahead to consent agenda, I would like to pull out Boobird, the approval of the entertainment. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to pull out of consent agenda?
I'd like to pull them in itself for a couple of small changes.
Okay, anything else? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda to include approval of the Christmas lights and accept resignation of Sean Daly?
I'm sorry, I have a question on Christmas.
Okay, we're going to go back. All right.
My question is pretty simple.
Okay, they're already up.
Yeah, thank you.
Well, these, these.
Are these temporary Christmas lights?
This is. Yeah, this was.
Okay. I was approached back in late summer about the Christmas tree lights. In the past, the Chamber of Commerce has taken care of that. They provided, they paid for it and then a bunch of volunteers, myself included, were handing the Christmas lights.
Yeah.
And then the business in town approached me, asked me, and I said I would, I would run, I made it by Erica Brown, who was the chapter, uh, Chair for the Kpan Chamber, as well as a couple of other volunteers. The Chamber didn't have a problem with it, so we went ahead. And we went ahead and scheduled it, told them about it last week, and that's when it occurred to me, geez, we got to talk to, I had to talk to Greg about this, that's what made it to the consent agenda. I was surprised as was he that, they hung them, I was surprised that the lights went on. That was just an oversight.
So.
And they'll come, they'll come down, they're temporary, they're just going to be, just like, you know, come down at the end of, the beginning of the year, I guess.
Well, it says here from the 23rd of November, so it's a little premature.
I thought it was.
Until the 6th of January. And who is the AGEM?
The local business in town, he's the gentleman that has lit up the rest of the town. Okay, the only seven, the building, Seven Central, Eleven Central. A couple of buildings, you know, Haver, Haver's Point, and he's been looking to try to create some consistency and following, in my opinion, make it look like a little career knives postcard.
Well, I'm, I'm, I will say I'm a little taken aback that it's, it's, it's kind of a little bit of a cart for the horse and that this was done prior to prior to the board even hearing about it.
Oh, we, we strung them.
No, no, I mean, the process for the open bid process, I mean, did.
We're done for free, but the town, of course, pays.
What, how? Right, so I just wasn't sure what the process, what, I mean, for the resident, I see the town lit up, it looks beautiful, but not clear on what the process was.
So in the past, the Chamber has requested permission
Okay.
to do so.
Okay, and, and then they took care of it.
So it's interesting to me, though, so it was just sort of a decision between three people to change it up?
I approached, when, when I was approached, okay, I went to the Chamber. Like the Chamber, we have been doing it for, I don't know, ever since.
I thought you said you went to Erica.
No, well, I, Erica, Erica being the chapter, the Chamber of Chapter Chair here, Mike Strela, who was a volunteer for the Chamber as well, okay? And there were about five or six of us that over the course of the last seven or eight years, I'm hung with lights. Didn't think much beyond that, because this is one of those things that the gentleman wanted to do, he wanted to beautify the town, like a great addition, and then after the And then after that, and I'm going to speak to this, last Monday, I guess it was, or I sent an email, uh, email to Grace, and it just occurred to me, you probably need something, some kind of permission, because it was on town property. Uh, and that was an oversight on my part, but it was uh, so we went ahead, uh, Mr. Flamio did it. Okay, it is all, it is expensive. Okay, and we'll take it down if all it is expensive.
So if Mr. Flamio um, is putting up the, the lights, is there anything, I mean, is this out of the good, I mean, what is the motivation there?
She wants to back the community.
He, she?
He.
Okay, I thought you said she, sorry. Now my.
No, there is, there is, there is no, in my opinion, uh, other than the fact that he wants consistency with all the lights in town. But maybe there is uh, uh, I, I'm guessing that's the motivation factor right there.
Okay, um, I, I would just like to say that I think that we, we, and it's very nice of him to volunteer to do this and spending his time and money. Um, but I do think we need to make sure that.
Well, the future now, I've already.
Jesus Christ, I've got it.
I've already spoken to him about it. And he apologized. Um, he's out of town, so he didn't even realize what's happening.
Any other board comments, John Round?
No, no, and I just, all of a sudden we lit up.
I, I was shocked when I came to town, because I'm the one, I'm the one that presented the dates. I, I, I think I came into town Thursday night. And I think that's when they went on, and I was a little uh, shocked by it. The fact that I happened to listen to Christmas tunes on the way in, it kind of appropriate, you know? I don't know, I'm just rushing the season.
Little seasonality?
Well, I figure the sooner we get it done, the sooner we get to spring, yeah.
I don't see how that goes, but I like that way of thinking. Okay, Kathy, any?
This, the, all the concerns that you expressed, um, I share. This is not the way to go about it. It's a wonderful gift. Uh, thank the person who gave it to us, but I don't want to see a repeat next year. That's my comment.
Right.
Okay, that, that will be.
Um,
Are, are they going to stay on from now until, is it, he said officially Christmas?
I, I will ask him to.
Because these, these dates make a little more sense.
I will touch base with him uh, when we're done here. He's down in Brazil right now, so I'm talking to him at four o'clock this morning. Which was not a pleasant, you know, I just woke up, but I'll ask that he uh, turn the uh, the lights off. Also, there was something on social media about one of the light poles that wasn't lit. Okay, down by Summer Street, and I believe he took care of that today.
I'm confused. Who has control over when they're on and off? I thought we had, we had a nice gift, but I didn't think somebody else had control over.
Oh, he's, he's got a, he's got a uh, whatever reason, they were turned on sooner than it was.
So who had, that's not my question.
Right.
Who has control over the switch?
Well, they're just plugged into the light poles.
Who turns them on, who turns them off? What, where is the timer?
The control by D T W?
Okay, okay, that was my question. Okay, they stay off until we agree as a board when they should be turned on, correct?
I'm, okay.
The, the, these are the, the streetlights. Now, he's got several buildings that have lights.
The poles that have.
And.
And this is the first time, usually, he uh, in the past, if you recall, and I'm not here to defend him one way or the other, uh, is that this is the soonest any of these buildings have ever come up. It's usually right around Christmas by the ceiling, I think. So I don't know whether we jumped the gun here, I don't know, with his subcontract or whatever, but I will, I will touch base with him when we're done here.
And I'm, I'm sure these are LED lights, right?
I think they, they cost less than what the, with, whatever the uh, as far as operating goes.
Well, yeah, it's the.
Less than what uh, the Chamber was providing.
And I personally don't have a problem with them being on now. It doesn't, doesn't bother me, um, but does anybody else have a preference?
I don't have a strong opinion.
To be honest with you, since daylight, ladies' time has ended, I find them a welcome addition um, cheering us up now that gets dark at like four thirty, whatever.
Me too.
I, I, my only comment is, um, I do think I, we should be referring to them as holiday lights. Um, there are a lot of holidays celebrated over the next two months.
Yep. I, I, I would I would agree with that. Um, Greg or Debbie, is there typically a form that, 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 or an email somebody sends to you regarding, okay, can we have uh, Mr. Flamio submit just a, a letter of, of his intent to put up the holiday lights? That, um, and just what we have here. So if he could formally submit that, that would be wonderful. Did we cover that one? Nope, doki. Um, so may I have a motion to, under the consent agenda, approve holiday lights as well as accept the resignation of Sean Daly?
So, holiday.
As the Parks and Rec Committee.
Holiday, what's the timeframe we're approving?
Uh, the holiday lights will be up from away from now until January sixth, from four in the afternoon to bring that up again.
Kind of done.
Ten at night. Okay. And are we, is everybody good with that? Okay, motion to approve those two items, please?
So moved.
Second? Okay, moved by Kathy Bellata, seconded by Brian Solacy. Roll call vote. John Round?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. That's unanimous. Okay, uh, we have one more minute. Ann, what did you want to talk about regarding the minutes?
Um, two small things, one, um, um, one, one, two, three, fourth page, talking about the votes. Um, the paragraph that starts, Ms. Harrison asked if the town did not put in the votes. I may have said that, but I didn't, the town is not going to put in votes at, at any either of the meetings, and so.
Okay.
Um, if the votes were not put in. And the other one is on the President's Lounge page. Um, Mr. Brown asked how much water we're using in flushing. Mr. Fetterfield answered, we are required to estimate the gallons, and it is a fraction of what, I think it's a fraction.
I also had a couple of changes to the minutes, that's wrong, uh, or, or maybe it's my confusion. Um, I thought that um, Becky, you were going to be the liaison to the Harvard Advisory Committee.
That, that was at this meeting, Brian was, then we admitted that.
Then you admitted, okay.
Yeah, so that is correct at that point.
All right.
Shortest term ever.
Yeah.
And then, um, I apologize, but there was somewhere a mention of the fees that the town would collect would be um, waterway fees and slip fees, I guess excise taxes that the town benefits from, not slip fees. So I just think that one item needs to be cleared back.
Thank you. Okay, um, and I sent mine in, so.
Move to approve the minutes of the October seventeen um, meeting of the Select Board, um, as in that.
Moved by Ann Harrison, seconded Kathy Bellata. Roll call vote. Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
John Round?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes, and we are ready to move on to Amendment to the North Shore Regional Compost Facility. Pretty straightforward. Any questions, John Round?
Nope.
Kathy?
Yes.
Brian Solacy? Ann Harrison?
No.
My only question was, and just confirm, town councils all square on this, correct?
Right, he, he corrected, within the language of them, of them to agree to it.
Okay, you have a roll call vote, I mean a, a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by John Round. Roll call vote. John Round?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes, that's unanimous. Okay, so. Uh, let's see, we have to go, we can go back to the consent agenda now. Um, and this is on the application of entertainment or Boobird. Um,
We did tell them that would be likely later tonight.
Okay.
About quarter of, um.
Okay, so we will.
But depending on what questions you might have.
Okay, uh, can we go on then to the uh, Town Administrator's Report?
That's fine. Um, yeah, just a, a few items to, to go over. One, as you know, um, both marinas in town have applications before the planning board. And they asked, um, if you had comments that you wanted to make. Their meeting is Wednesday night. And I'm not, Kathy submitted some comments that she had, and so I, others, if you still want to do that, I'll, I'll collect them and send them along for once in a meeting, and like, oh, that's one Kathy's notes, and that's fine. That's, I just want to
Right.
update on that. Um, so again, just to be clear, so two separate processes. There's the, the planning board, um, site plan review process, which focuses on the various site plan review criteria. Um, our bylaw says that any project that requires a chapter ninety-one license also has to be a site plan review approval through the plan. So the, the, the marinas are seeking that approval first, and then they will submit their floral chapter ninety-one license applications. And then that triggers another round of public comments. That's possible. Um, and we're, we have different criteria than the, than the planning board wishes. So just clarifying that that is the process.
Uh, will we be able to hear? I, I'd love to hear how the uh, boat ride went. And if any, any members of the public uh, opted to, to attend as well.
I don't, I wasn't there.
Because it was open to them, I knew that.
Yeah, that was.
I don't think there's any members in the public.
I don't, I don't believe there were. A couple I asked about it, and one, they said they were gonna go, but I don't think they ended up showing up.
Yep.
Um, uh, so, yeah, the planning board was able to um, view from the water, they would be done from Harvard National Roads. And um, and see the, the layout, imaginative layout from, from the water. Um, and I think they found that instructive.
I would imagine so. I hope to do that, but couldn't.
I, I've, I've got a question about the chapter ninety-one. Is that just a decision, yes, no, or whatever, or is it, is this like a, a written decision, this is what we think?
Well, it'll be a written decision. They'll, they'll have findings.
We, we, and we will get to see that.
Yes.
Good.
Yeah, they'll issue a, a findings and then a final decision. That's part of the license.
Could we get, I mean, if, if we're being asked to um, comment or weigh in, um, do we have access on the SharePoint to that information? That they'll be sharing? I know it's limited ass, access on SharePoint. I was trying to access something today and couldn't.
So we could certainly provide that?
Yeah, I, I think it'd be, it would be helpful to me certainly. Debbie, you're furrowing your brow. Am I, am I being confusing? Okay, it can happen. Doesn't, all right.
Uh, so secondly, um, the school street, and I'm wrapping up, we, we got all the bypass pipe on the, on the road. We're working this week to do the cleanup, basically, remove the temporary
Aprons?
Aprons, yeah, thank you, the driveway aprons that were getting people up and over the pipe, temporary pipe, and the patching on the road. They, they'll not get a new cable until next spring. Um, so it'll be a little rough during the year, but it'll certainly be better than, than it has been over the last few months. So I'm sure people are anxious for it to finally be back more to normal.
Mm-huh.
A few days away from that. So hopefully by the end of this week, it'll, it'll be all, it'll be all cleaned up.
All right. Um, Quite a picture on those pipes before and after.
Yes.
Oh, you know.
Yes, it's, it's quite a difference. That's, that's why we need to do it. Uh, yeah, unfortunately, we have a lot of pipe. That's a, that's a difference.
Yeah.
Um, so we'll keep chipping away at sections of town to do that. Um, the design work at uh, on that point for the rotunda is getting underway. And the engineer will develop three different options. One is raising it up in its current location. Um, and then a, a raise of the, of the pier going out to it. Um, second alternative is to raise it up and have it a, a little further out from where it is. Um, enabling it just to be moved once rather than twice. Uh, and then a third option would be a land-based option. And looking most likely at that, um, sort of granite mull that's, as you're looking at the rotunda just to your left. That, that mull area.
Kind of where the old launching areas, right? Near the old launch area?
Between.
Between.
Between the launch area and, and, and the road ton, yeah.
Would that preclude kids jumping off it anymore?
It, it would.
Brian, I think that would be a wise thing.
It's, it's the rightest passage, though.
Yes.
Who's, who's managing that process? Is that D P W or?
So D P W is managing it.
That's what I mean, yeah, they've got somebody.
Boss engineers. Um, they did the engineering work for the new float set tucks. They've done an engineering on the red.
Same guy.
Same, same firm.
Okay.
Yeah, so once they develop um, some preliminary plans on those three options, you bring them for you and for the performer to, to gain some public input, on which most of the options are, um, most desired.
Okay.
And cost comparisons. So that's underway.
Cost comparison of life expectancies or.
Yes, yes.
We're not considering putting it on top of the subject now.
No, we are not. We do not ask them to look at that option. And the, the last uh, report item here is, I'm pleased to say that we have brought onboard a interim planner for twenty, twenty to twenty-three hours a week. Betsy Ware is her name. Some people may recognize that name. She grew up in town. And uh, has been a professional planner in a number of communities in, in the state, retired recently. Um, is willing to help us out on an interim basis. And so I think that'll help us keep, keep things moving. So I'm, I'm pleased that we are able to find someone so quickly. And uh, she started today. And we'll be working mostly Mondays and Thursdays in town hall and remotely Monday.
Planning board? Has she met any of the members of the planning board yet?
Uh, she will Wednesday, so she'll attend the meeting, I think. Uh, but I did uh, send her resume and, and announcement through now as well.
That's fine.
So those are the things I wanted to go over.
Thank you. Okay, brings us to seven twenty and the policy on political signs on public property. Okay, uh, thank you to John and Ann. And before I, I go on, I, I need to back up once more. Um, and regarding the Harvard Advisory Committee. And I want to, to also thank very much Sean Zahn and Jim Starkey for offering to help, and, and hopefully they will um, not be um, shy of stepping up or, or possibly getting involved with the uh, with the Harvard Master Plan when that comes forward. So thank you very much. When that comes forward, so thank you very much to Jim and Sean. Okay. Debbie, you're gonna have a lot of fun with these minutes, don't you? Okay, so now we're on the policy and John and Ann.
Um, I think when we discussed the, um, policy last time, we agreed that the Angie destroyed was inappropriate. That the policy was a tendency, what had happened in the past, the signs were collected and, put someplace where they could be, so I, I, I took that up without even talking to John.
That's right.
Did you go rogue, Ann?
Kathy had asked, um, had said that was universally known what, which pieces of property were, um, owned by the town. And I added a list of the ones that came into my mind. And in particular, the, the town property. Um, the, uh, property near Single Place Hill is town-owned, but managed by the Conservation Trust. So I included that.
And, and there, there are a number of places where I've seen signs before, such as where benches are. Some of those are private, some of that is town land, you know, medians, things like that. Um, do we need to include the, um, some specifics? Or are we, is it clear enough with town land, town property?
So I, just a question along that line. Um, so is there a place on the website where we list town property or town lands? And we could just have the policy referred to that list? Or is, do we not have something that the public, I, I think this is a wonderful addition. I'm just not sure people will know which lands are owned by the town and managed by MECT. So.
Yeah, we, I don't think we have, well, we, we do have a listing as part of the Open Space Plan. It has a list of all town lands, so people wouldn't know necessarily to go there.
Yeah, I don't think they would.
So we could certainly put.
So if there is an existing link up online, we could add that as a link from this policy to this. And here's a list of the properties where signs are not allowed or something.
Yep.
Wouldn't that be okay?
Like, and I know that, that if you go to the maps. Uh, you know, the, the, um, town property, the.
You can find a property owner, a, a piece, but it's a little tedious.
It, it is very tedious, so that's, that's where I think that, you know, if someone were to, to wanna know about a specific piece, they could go on the map. But, um, it would be a lot clearer if there was a direct link.
Also, I think, uh, the town clerk should have a list. Only because I know I asked. Okay, right up front. So, I mean, that would be, my, that's where I went to work when I asked, when I went to Diana's office.
Interesting, is that, is that?
That's fine.
Okay. And the only reason I'm going, hmm, is because I know that, that town clerk has a lot of hats. And he's just a little reluctant to give one more. However, but if, if there are other.
It seems like, it seems like you pull your papers from the top.
Exactly.
Yeah, that's a great point.
Or if you go to the assessors, I mean, they've got the maps there, wouldn't, would that be a logical place to get?
I'm just saying, I mean, I just, it just seemed logical to me, if I'm pulling papers from her, she's the one source, I'm gonna go through anything election.
So I agree with that, that's, that's a great point. This policy also covers, um, I'm not, it's not just for elected officials, it's for policy positions. So in that instance, a person might not be pulling papers, but still need to.
Well, that's all these signs.
Yeah, exactly, exactly, yeah.
Yeah. Um, Greg, do we have, uh, a map with, that lays out where the public, uh, publicly owned properties are?
We do, yes.
I mean, that's better than having a list, people don't identify it. You have a map, you know where you are in town, and you can easily look and see what the story is. So we should have that graphic, and that would solve the problems in.
Sure.
Second, somebody would say, I know what's going on.
Can we have a statement policy that's attached to when you pull papers?
Say it again?
When, when you pull your papers, your nomination papers, you sign up, when Diana McClure gives you this, and she also hands you this, this is the town policy. That way there's, there's no, uh, identity to ask.
That's a, that's a sad idea.
Sounds to me as that we are not prepared to approve this policy yet.
This is second reading, right?
This is second reading and.
Second reading.
We don't have, like, we don't, we, we're referencing a list that we don't have.
Right.
And.
Well, that, this will change.
Yeah, yeah, um. So with that, is it that this, this policy is handed out when someone pulls papers? So we need to incorporate that into the policy, right? To be handed out when someone is.
Yeah, to be honest with you, I wasn't suggesting we needed to really change any wording. I, I, you know, there's, there's, it's underlying here, just a live link or something to, we, but that wouldn't help if someone got a paper copy of the policy, so.
Are we then comfortable with this policy as it's written for the second reading? Anybody want any changes to it?
Maybe there should be a, as you say, a listing or of, of the public. You know, the public, public lands may be found next.
Well, we don't have an X. We have an X that's in the Open Space Plan somewhere.
Well, we, we can print it now.
Okay, where do you find?
Yeah, where, where does somebody go for that?
Well, so we'll create a map and, and put it on the website with, with the policy.
Is the policy going on the website?
I would put this one on in particular just because of the.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, it could be under the, um, town clerk and the election.
Exactly.
The policy.
Go and create a hornet's nest, that's what I do. So, an example being, we talked about S O D, Black Lives Matter, all these signs that are out there are no longer allowed on town property. Is that?
That, 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 that was my intention in sending that.
And as long as it was consistent across the board, then no one.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, which is what this is about.
So is it enough to say, or should, are we gonna stay silent and just say, a listing of town properties may be found on the town website? Which is pretty generic.
I don't think we need to state that in here. I think that, that it's, we say town property. So if somebody wants to find out town property, you.
Right, I, I think we, the policy is perfectly fine as it is, and I think we could approve it. When we publish this policy on the town website, we can add onto the town website. Oh, by the way, and here, here's where you find a list of town properties. That's what would allow us to approve this tonight, move forward and still get the job done.
May I have a motion to approve?
Um, hang on, I wanna make sure. I had, I made.
Your change.
Two, two changes, one was Anne destroyed going away. And the other was including, and do we just want to stop at owned by the town of Manchester period? Or do we want to list examples?
I think we end at the town of Man, you know, property owned by the town of Manchester.
And when it goes on the website.
Then we have the link.
The website has the link, okay, right, fine.
Everybody, what is everybody else?
So that clarifying statement is not gonna be on it?
Clarifying statement, well, I am suggesting that, that the clarifying statement may not be necessary.
John, what do you think? John's got his.
I think, I, I, I think it provides the reader, not only us but others, you know, information that they may not necessarily have thought about. Especially the land that, uh, the town owns, but is managed by the, uh, MECT. I, I don't think a lot of people think very much about that. And I can see that parking area down there.
Yeah, yeah.
With, with signs. And I don't think, yeah, I, I, you know, I'm saying perhaps out of ignorance or anything else, Steve, that I did, I didn't think that was.
Well, I don't, I don't have a problem with that staying in.
I, I'm perfectly fine with just the way Anne had it right here, I think it's great.
I like it.
Okay.
Okay, moved to approve the second reading of the policy on political science on public property. Um, including the, um, list of properties and not including the destroyed.
Wow, you got that?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellotta, roll call vote, Ann Harrison.
Yes.
Brian Solacey.
Yes.
Kathy Bellotta.
Yes.
John Round.
Yeah, so it's as written, yeah.
Becky Jake says yes, it's unanimous, thank you to our policy people. All right, next up, we have the water ban discussion. And we have been, it's been reduced from level three to level two in our area. John, say again, Ann, what is the state policy on level two? I need to refresh myself.
Level, level two, they still recommend handling laundry. And serve and handle weather.
Just right along, that's where we are.
What is the level of the reservoir at this point that you have, that we've been watching?
Is it checked on?
Yeah, no, check isn't on, uh. Yeah, I haven't checked in the last week.
And you know, that, that's a difficult thing to use, because not only is that a function of the groundwater that is feeding into Gravelly Pond, it's also a function of what the DPW decides to pump in there from Round Pond. So that level is controlled by the DPW, and they have kind of ranges that they wanna be in. And some days they're pumping a lot of water, and some days, in general, it's a similar amount every day, but it's not always. So they're regulating.
They're comfortable with what the level is.
Yes, they are.
I, I, I feel that we need to, if we're talking about where the water level is, I, I think we need to let our residents do that end of year cleaning on their property, um, just like we discussed with the boats, you know, it's once a year, you gotta flush your engine, where you put it in storage, and there is some, you know, cleanup that people would like to do that's before the winter and, um, expensive, uh, I don't know, just the thought, depending on the water levels.
My understanding, those are just suggestions from the state, it's not a mandate from the state.
Correct.
So we, we're unique, we have a lot of people that are taking their boats out of the water. And think, um, and if someone wants to stand there in the middle of November and water the line, God bless them.
A lot of those people have irrigation systems, and to be honest, the majority have already been shut off.
Right.
So if they're using water outside, it's their house water, which is a lot more expensive.
Yeah, I mean, at this point, they're looking at first broths and first reads too.
Yes, that's correct. And trying to do all of that by the, uh, end of, end of October. So I, 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 I think, I think we're good.
I agree.
Right. Ann, I think we put in the, um, conservation restrictions, um, because of the state, state drought. And, um, I'm having a couple finding a logical, um, understanding of why we put the, why we put it in, Beverly didn't put in anything. Um, and, and what are the grounds that are different now? Aside from the fact that people probably aren't going to be using irrigation systems. So are we only going to have water protection? I guess we only have it in the summer anyways, and just, we had a reason for doing it, the reason still exists. Um, and yet we think we're not gonna do it anymore.
John? Well, the consumption during the summer is several times higher than it is during the regular year.
And that's irrigation.
And it's all irrigation, it's like three times higher in our town, which is much higher than any of the other towns around us.
Irrigation, filling pools, things like that.
So people are, are back to their core consumption, you hope that everybody is more or less conscious and trying to be as efficient as, as possible. And I think that most people are sensitive to the fact that you should conserve water, because they're not making much more of it.
There's an awful lot around.
There is.
All around us.
We have a difficult perspective relative to Kansas or something, it's just.
Or California.
Or, yes.
The town is what, forty-seven percent and change is water?
I mean, to your point, Ann, we, I, you know, the water shortage here was never as difficult as it was in a lot of other places in the state. And the state, you know, moved to these restrictions, and I think we kind of moved there because drought was kind of moving in that direction. But if push came to shove, we were still going to be in a better position than most of the other communities around us. Because our, our, our water basin, the coastal water basin is, we're very fortunate, it, it has a goodly amount of water, as opposed to the Ipswich Basin, which.
Which is, yeah.
Which is a real problem for all of the towns north of us. So, but still to the point, I, I, I think that we're, we're fine with our water as it stands, and we should remove the ban. If you don't, people are gonna start to think you're kind of crying wolf here a little bit. And keeping things going when that's going on. I think you, I think you really need to have bans when it really makes sense that you've got shortages and you should have.
I am in agreement with Ann on this, I think that, that what's apparent to some is not necessarily apparent to others. Um, and I think this is a, a situation that's going to be getting worse.
I'm guessing. One of the questions was what is the state of, of, or of Gravelly Pond? Could we put this off to the next meeting? And so we can hear from Chuck that, in fact, everything is fine?
So Chuck's on, I don't know if you guys can hear me, this is Chuck.
Hey Chuck!
There he is. Sorry, sorry, I didn't, uh, I didn't see the bat signal, uh, in time, it was Chuck, the MPW. Um, so I, I can answer any of the questions, I, sorry, I just got in, so I didn't, uh, hear everything, but, um, in general, um, and I think I've said this before, but we, we need a situation because we have a registration that currently does not have any sort of water restrictions implemented. Uh, so on any given year, we, and you guys as the water commissioners dictate when we implement these restrictions. The thing that's changed in the last couple of years, and, you know, since other years, is that, um, the state has come up with a state, uh, drought plan, and that drought plan was kicked into effect and was actually, you know, made in twenty twenty, so it's, it's very new. But essentially what you're seeing and why there, I think there is confusion, and, you know, to be honest, it, you know, if, if I wasn't in my position, I probably wouldn't pay attention either. But the, the, the reason I think that we implemented the restrictions earlier in the summer is because the entire state and certainly our region was in a drought. And the state drought plan calls for you to, you know, ban non-essential outdoor use. Um, we did not have to do that, but we did it, and I think it was prudent at the time to show that we are, you know, good stewards of our environment, and we are trying to, um, ensure that we have water, you know, in times of drought. Um, now that being said, we, we also have the power to lift those restrictions that we self-imposed, uh, when we've deemed, you know, that's the right thing to do. Um, I would, I would go a little bit further and just say that it will not always be like this. There, I sent Greg last week, and I don't know if he got a chance to read it, but the, the state is, you know, DEP, who holds our registration, uh, is trying to implement, uh, because we have to renew our registration every ten years, is trying to implement that, uh, basically these water restrictions kick in, uh, when the state says they do. And that would have been, you know, what you saw this summer, and so that, technically, we would be in a situation if those, uh, restrictions were implemented right now, uh, to not be able to lift them until the state said that we could. Now, I will say, the state drought plan, while well-intentioned, aren't looking at the micro, uh, watershed level, meaning our water supply. They are looking at the greater basin, and the greater basin is even beyond our sub-basin, which is the north coastal, like John mentioned. But also includes basically our region, which is northeast region, which includes the Ipswich, which has no water. And so that's why there's gonna be a lot of confusion, uh, if they, if DEP does implement these ki, types of kind of broad restrictions, we're not gonna be able to really tell our customers or citizens anything, except the state said so, and so we have to do it. But that's not the situation we're in right now, and so that's why. And so that's why, you know, I, I'm comfortable certainly lifting the water restrictions. I did talk to Ben today, who's our lead operator. And our daily demand running seven-day average is less than four hundred thousand gallons a day. To put that in perspective, a typical summer day, we're well over a million. So we're, you know, roughly at a third of our typical consumption. And that is, you know, dead on with the fact that, you know, it's the middle of November, getting in late November, or I should say, we're now past November and we have, you know, nobody's turning on their irrigation system, even if they wanted to. They probably wouldn't because they'd have to drain it again. So, you know, there, there's no reason to believe that our, you know, if we lift this ban, that our non-essential use is going to skyrocket to the, you know, levels of, you know, a summer day, that's just not going to happen. So I'm fairly comfortable, I think people have been reasonable. I haven't been getting a ton of calls in my office. So I, I would be, you know, you know, willing to bet that we don't see any sort of issues. So I, I'll leave it there unless there's any other questions, but.
Chuck, I, I do have a question for you and I apologize if I missed this, if you said it. So what the use we're seeing now is that typical for this time of year, more or less?
Yeah, for sure.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board for Chuck? Anne? Brian?
No.
Kathy? John? Okay, thank you Chuck.
Yeah, no problem.
I move to move the water ban.
Okay, moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellotta, roll call vote, Anne Harrison.
Yes.
Brian Solis.
Yes.
Kathy Bellotta.
Yes.
John Round.
Yes.
Becky Jake says no, so four to one, the water ban is lifted. Can we please, as you suggested, Greg, still ask people to be conservative in their use? Okay, thank you. So next up, special town meeting. Hi Alan.
Hi Becky, hi everybody.
So, as you know, we have our special town meeting scheduled for next Monday and likely Tuesday. It's likely to span two, two evenings. Obviously depending on how quickly we fit in the various articles and I can always predict exactly. So I think it's worth your while just basically running through the articles just to refresh you public, the articles we have on tap. Already taking your position, just to refresh who's, who's taking what article. So that we are on the same page. The Board of Health has issued protocols for the town meeting that we will be following. That means masks will be required in the auditorium section. For people who want to sit in the main, main meeting room, we'll have full audiovisual connection with the cafeteria, which will be a space where people can go if, if they prefer not to wear a mask. And so people will be spaced out and spaced apart in the cafeteria if they don't want to wear a mask. I, I think we've had good, good compliance in the past with mask wearing at town meetings. We don't expect issues. I think the majority of people will, will want to be in the auditorium and then they'll put on a mask. So like I said.
Has that information been put out so people know that they'll have to wear a mask?
So it is posted on the website and was by the town meeting page. Emphasize that.
It will be, it will be, I, I've sent a letter to the cricket, it'll be in this week's cricket as well.
Thank you Alan.
I just said that, I think it's important we provide it as much as possible. Doctor's appointment, I gotta, you know.
We, we will also have some available one as people check in. We have produced, thanks to Debbie's good work, a nice booklet for, for the town meetings are available now. I encourage people to pick them up. They're available here at town hall and the police lobby at the library. They'll be available tomorrow all day at the memorial school as people do. So people can pick them up after voting as well. And of course, we'll have them at, at the town meeting. We certainly encourage people to, to pick them up ahead of time and, and review the different articles and the details. So the whole warrant is in here and then the actual proposed language for each of the zoning articles are in here as well. And those all have a line number, so people can recurge and speak with the line number. Then they'll debate if that's, if that's needed. So hopefully that will help move things along.
Diane, have there been many people coming in to either of the, any of the locations to pick them up yet?
Yeah, we've got now, it's a, well, box full, boxes probably a hundred plus copies.
Wonderful, okay.
So, so yes, people are picking them up. Hopefully that will continue over the next few days as well. I, I would expect to give out a lot tomorrow on that voting. So I think that'll be our biggest distribution. So like I said, I think it's worth your while just to, not to delay, but to run through the articles and see if there are any, any questions or any informational needs.
Becky, excuse me, before we do that, I, I would, I'm, I am having spent, as you would guess, a lot of time with the warrant and with the planning board voters booklet. I'm, I'm convinced that we're going to need two nights for this meeting. And I want to inform the voters ahead of time that that's likely the case, so that they know what to expect. And to help me do that, I would like to ask the board to vote formally to recommend to the meeting that if a second night is required, we reconvene on Tuesday, the fifteenth at six thirty. And I'll, I'll, I'll put that out in the, on the website and in the cricket if you agree.
And I think we are going to be doing another reverse nine-one-one, is that correct? And we could include the information on that as well, Alan?
I think that would be great.
And, and will we be able to have that done by a human as opposed to a?
Yeah, I, I much prefer the human voice rather than the computerized voice.
And so that'll be, you'll, you'll give the exact information or wording you'd like, Alan?
For the reverse nine-one-one?
Just, just for the, both the masks as well as the feeling, strong feeling that we will go to a second night and that it will be Tuesday, the fifteenth, starting at six thirty?
I think that's what we should do. As, the earlier start, I think on the second night is also desirable. I, I have already got the public health protocol posted on the website. And I think it's also on social media. And it will be in the cricket on Friday.
Okay, and it would be good to go ahead and include that in the reverse nine-one-one call. Okay, thank you.
Debbie, how much time do you need to rehearse this?
So it would be appropriate to have that motion about the second night.
And what specifically would the language be for that?
It would be that the Board of Selectmen recommends to the meeting that if a second night is required, we reconvene on Tuesday, the fifteenth at six thirty PM in the high school.
With the same health protocols?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, so moved.
Okay. Moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by Brian Solis, roll call vote, Anne Harrison.
Yes.
Brian Solis.
Yes.
Kathy Bellotta. John Round.
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes, that's unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, so you wanted to go over who's.
I, I hope, I hope the voting at town meeting goes so smoothly. I'll, I'll try to emulate your example Becky.
One can only hope. Okay. You wanna, who's speaking to which? Did you want to go over those again? Is that what?
I, I just kind of ran through the articles and just sort of refreshed people's memories. Obviously, the bulk of the articles are, are plenty more articles. So Article one is the seeking appropriation hundred, hundred thirty thousand dollars from our designated fund allowance to help pay for legal professional services related to the forty D project.
And that's John Round will speak for that.
My notes from our last conversation about this indicate that, that Becky was going to move and John Round was going to speak. I think in general, it makes sense for the speaker to be the mover.
Okay, and then why don't we have John Round move that and?
Alan, and your, your comments guidelines are what?
Uh, two minutes.
Fine.
Unless you need more time.
No.
In advance.
And we had Anne Harrison as seconding that, go ahead and keep that same. So Article two.
Yeah, Article two is a motion to appropriate the sum of four hundred fifty thousand from the town's existing fire and after-addis fund for either an ambulance rebuild, ambulance one, and it's two, I'm sorry, the older ambulance rebuild or to purchase a new ambulance. And again, this is, this is what you have, an article that you have put forward. The question of whether or not to pursue a rebuild or to find a new is one that can be made after voters approve this article. It's something that you and the finance committee and the fire chief would have the authority then to, to finalize which, which direction to take.
So it's not a decision that has to be made at this moment?
I, I have a question for Alan. Will you allow discussion on the two alternatives? Or would this simply be approve this expenditure and the, the, the decision about how it will be spent or how much we spend will be made subsequently by the Board of Selectmen?
That's a very good question. I had, I had assumed that there would be some discussion of the alternatives, but it may, it may be that it's not necessary. I, I'd like to think about that some more, but it's a good question Anne, thank you. Since, since the, since the motion would allow both, I'm not sure that the reason, there's a reason for the meeting to discuss the merits of one alternative versus the other.
Or, or another way of putting that is, would we have all of the relevant data to have a you know, the right discussion? I, I, I think we are not going to have all of the relevant data at the time.
Sarah is speaking to this, right?
We have that Anne Harrison is speaking, the chief will speak and Sarah Malish will speak. So Anne is from speaking from the board because she's moving it and I'm seconding it.
Well, the, those speakers that will engender a lot of discussion.
They have two minutes each.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I, I need to think about whether, whether we're going to allow, whether I'm going to allow discussion of the merits of rebuild versus new purchase. Since, since the vote as proposed would authorize both, I'm not sure that there's a reason to have a discussion of, of merits of alternatives. The meeting is not going to decide unless the motion is changed between the two alternatives. But let me, let me think about that and maybe confer with town council.
All right.
I will, I will get back to you.
Thank you Alan.
So Article three then is the citizen petition article seeking new general bylaw and something that would be approved by the general legislature as a special act will allow for a recall provision of elected officials. Let me, Becky, yours?
I'm going to speak on that, to that.
And I, I understand that, that there was a four to one vote on that. Anne, did, I, I think you were the no vote, did, did you want to speak on that as well?
I, I was actually the yes vote.
The, it was the board.
Yes.
Four, four were no, one yes, Anne was the yes.
To, to recommend approval?
Yeah, correct.
Yeah, and my question, so my question is, Anne, did you want to speak on that?
Yes.
Okay.
So would she be speaking from the perspective?
I would be speaking as myself because I do not speak for the board.
Right.
Then would that be at a different time and not standing at the beginning as a member of the select board?
Well, th- this is kind of an unusual meeting because, as I think you know, we have on the planning board minority members who differ from the majority on several of the planning board's proposed zoning amendments. And so the way I'm going to organize that aspect of it is I'm going to allow, after the spokesperson for the majority of the planning board members speaks, I'm going to allow one of the two minority members to speak and I will give them equal time. And, and no more than equal time. And I think I should follow the same procedure with respect to this article and the majority and minority of the select board.
Sounds fair. Thank you Alan. Okay, so I will speak and then Anne will speak.
Yes.
Okay.
So then we move into the proposals, amendments, articles four through sixteen. Did you want to go through to those as well?
And I was going to speak in the beginning, in general, to that, okay? None of us will be speaking on those, right?
Wait, my, my understanding was you were going to make an opening statement under, under the motion on Article four with, with respect to your recommendations in general. And then no, no one on behalf of the selectmen would be speaking on the individual articles thereafter.
Correct, that's what I had as well. Do we want?
That doesn't preclude any of you from making a comment or responding to someone else's comment.
There's a question essentially, um, so in the past, I've seen select board members speak from their perch up on high and I think at the last town meeting, one of the articles, Anne, I think you came down from the stage and went to I'm wondering, what's the protocol? If, if one of us wanted to comment on something, as a, just as a resident, is that what the protocol is? That you go, come down off the floor to a regular microphone or?
Well, what, what I'm anticipating, the, what I've told the, the DPW staff for arranging the, the physical setup of the meeting is that we'll have, as usual, the town administrator, the select board and probably town clerk will be to my right. And the planning board. Um, and the planning board uh will, along with the turning technology electronic voting person will be to my left. There will be a second podium at the left end of the stage where it'll be easier, easily accessible to the planning board members, uh, cuz they'll be doing most of the presenting there. So probably it'll be a little awkward for select board members to maneuver from the table at my right to the podium at the far end of the stage on the left. I would suggest that the select board members all speak from the table.
Even if they are speaking as a member of the public and not representing or speaking as a, a board member?
Well, as, as I said, we, this is a little bit unusual cuz we're gonna have minority members of two town boards speaking. And so I would anticipate that the planning, the planning board minority would do their speaking from the planning board table or the podium at the far end, and that the select board members, including the minority, would speak from their seats at the table.
I just find it, I mean, I'm asking as a newbie, right, Chris?
Right.
And, and it does, if I have something to say, which I don't anticipate speaking at all, but um you know, if I'm speaking just as myself as a resident, I think I belong with the residents. I would expect to have an easy exit so I could come off the stage and go to a microphone like Ann did at the last meeting.
And that's typical. That's, that's what to, to, to remove any confusion. That's what I've seen in the past.
Is there any reason why we can't accommodate an easy path for a select board member to come off the stage if one of us feels the need to speak as a resident and not advocating for the board position?
Well, if, 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 if one is speaking as a resident and not as a minority member of the select board, you could go off the stage in front of the stage and use one of the roving mics.
Yeah. But even, I, I guess I'm questioning even as a minority member of, I mean, Brian and I voted differently on, I think, one of the articles.
Mm hmm.
Um, I don't plan to speak on that, but if one of us did wanna speak, why, I, I would not feel comfortable speaking from the stage because I, I at that point would not be representing the board's position. I think it's confusing. So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm questioning a little bit the thought of um minority board members speaking from the stage in, in any capacity because the board position of the board position and if any of us disagree, we, we're, we're speaking as residents.
Right.
I, I, I don't understand this concept of a minority board position. To me, that dilutes the, the strength of the board.
Well, I'm making this decision based on what I think is fair. And I, I think it is, there, there is a difference between individual residents speaking uh on their own behalf with their own opinions and minority board members on an elected board. I think in fairness to, I, and I come at this from the perspective of the, the, the differences between the planning board members. But I think in fairness to both sides of the, that debate, I need to accord them similar treatment.
So if, so upon the one article where Brian and I voted differently, if we choose to speak on that, then we should stay on the stage as minority board members for those articles?
Yes.
And that was Article fourteen?
Yes, the eighties. Yeah. Okay, let's make sure I understand the logistics. Thank you, Alan.
You're welcome. I, it's, it's, it, this is, as I said, this is an unusual situation, and I've, I've thought pretty carefully about this, and I, I want to accord elected board members, whether it's the planning board or the select board, um fair and equal treatment, whether they're in the majority or not.
Thank you. Okay.
So you wanna keep going or do you wanna?
Do you want to go through the individual at this point?
You guys can change?
No, no, there's not shit.
Well.
So I think the goal for me to get through.
Excuse me, we, excuse me, we, 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 we touched on the, the fact that the vote under Article fourteen uh with respect to the select board's recommendation was three to two. Let me just ask whether either Brian or Kathy would like to be recognized to speak on that one.
And before we do, I am going to say that if we do have one minority speak, we should have um a majority person speak as well.
Yeah, my, my part, this is different, I think. Um, me personally, I don't, I, these are planning board articles. We are a in a different um position there. I, I personally don't feel the need to speak on it.
I would agree. I think that that's my personal opinion based as a resident and not a member of the select board.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Alan, anything else?
Um. No, I think that's all. Thank you.
So we will.
I'm sorry.
I'm just gonna say we'll wait to hear back from Alan, right?
On what?
On the um. So. Say again?
I thought it was something.
With the article, Article two, Alan was going to give influence on the discussion on the merits.
Oh, right. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. Yeah, and whether to allow discussion of um the alternatives.
Yeah, okay.
I'm, I'm leaning against it. But maybe, maybe um, I think, I think Michelle was gonna stay on for your discussion of um the, the executive session that's coming up, and maybe while you deal with the other agenda items between now and then, she and I could have a chance to talk offline and uh, and we can get back to you in short order.
That'd be good. Okay, thank you.
Michelle? She was on for a moment. There she is. Can I give you a call? Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna mute and stop the video.
See you in a bit. Okay.
So I was just gonna come at that Article fourteen and fifteen are paired. So fourteen is approved, then Article fifteen would be passed over. If Article fourteen fails, then Article fifteen would be taken up. So just highlighting.
Hey, any other questions on review of the special town meeting? Liaison updates? Um, I do not have any except to say that the Harvard Advisory Committee just had a new member and appointed. Um. And that um Essex County has a bit of a, of a surge, the numbers right now. Um, okay. Uh, Ann, you have school committee concom?
I missed the concom meeting. It was an ordinary business meeting. They considered um permits and um so there, there really is no news from, they're not they're not doing any policy. They were not doing any policy issues. Um. The uh school committee um has approved the, the district plan and school plans um which are changing the focus from um a response to, response to intervention of and, and um dealing to um it's hard to put it in a very few words, but they, they are working on, on being sure that every child reaches his or her total potential and that um I don't know what big budget impact that's going to have. Um, and they don't either. Yeah, it's a tough one. So I'm, I'm paying attention. Um, they are just starting to work on, on their budget. Um, I think it'll be interesting. Um, they are, they are looking for, as I said before, they're, they are looking for course correction. Um. And the question is, is whether it will be um enough to, to solve the, the current budget problems or it will be somewhat of more aspiration. We will see. At their next meeting, they will be getting a report from the Habib organization, which does evaluate facilities. Um, they are looking at, especially, especially at the state of the Essex Elementary School um and whether the repairs on it in the next ten years would be money well spent.
Yeah.
Or whether it makes sense to um move up the uh process of, of rebuilding that school or doing a major.
Right.
Major reset.
Right.
Um, and that report will have something to do, will have something back on what they're, what to.
Does anybody? And does anybody remember how many more years before we retire the debt on the high school? Is that?
Thirty-four.
Four more years?
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four. Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you.
The other, the other thing that they need, that Habib will be looking at is that the quote, new high school um is now thirteen years old. And um it's expected to have a fifty-year lifecycle, but there are some pieces on science labs and climate that may need to look at.
Thank you. Um, Brian, Parks and Rec or Library?
Keep it long. Uh, it's still very contentious, although it should be quiet down for a while now.
With the one resident. Yep.
The daylight savings time.
Yeah, daylight saving time, cold, although I, you know, I bet you they're out there playing all the time. Uh. There were some recommendations by the board that kind of created uh some controversy as well. Uh, I think we're gonna wait to see what happens when uh the sonification plan of what they can come up with in the news. So at this point, hopefully it'll be quiet down along with the nothing with library having checked in.
Okay, Kathy?
Um, so that other than the articles of the town meeting, um, ten twenty-four, many board meetings, self development that all do gave an update on their status. So they selected their design team and on their master planning process. Um, I believe they said they were shooting for occupancy in twenty twenty-five, if I'm not mistaken. So just thinking overview and um everything else. I think we've already talked about town planner backfill, the site visits for the harbor boat ride and also the Pine Street field. They were supposed to have a site visit for that as well. That's all I need.
Thank you. Um, John?
Yeah, um DPW's doing fine, especially with its uh high-profile school street projects. So that's that's good. With regard to the water task force, there was a meeting that was held about a, a week or so ago. Task force, I think, is on schedule to deliver the um uh, the select board, a list of, a preliminary list of recommendations certainly by the end of the year. Uh, we did get a report from one of our consultants uh this past week with regard to what gravelly pond and uh where it was getting its water from and uh, when I say where, where specifically within the pond.
Yeah.
Water was, was coming, and that was educational in terms of looking at possibly drilling wells as um, as lead indicators of what, what condition that water might be in with regard to what purity, et cetera. So uh, that's continuing to move along.
When are you gonna go back for me?
Uh, by the end of the year.
Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, that takes care of liaison updates, and we move to entertainment license for Boober. Okay. Um, and it says that you are proposing live entertainment of. Yes, Alan.
But could I, could I just interrupt to, to report back?
Sure.
Okay, so with, with respect to Article two, um, I've been able to confer with town council. She's very helpful as always, and we, she and I agree that as, as currently um uh framed, the motion under Article two would not need to involve discussion of whether the rebuild or the purchase of a new ambulance is the better alternative. Um, because it's not, it's not town meeting's decision to choose between the two. It's, it's up to the board of selectmen. Oh, sorry, the select board, and um it's possible there could be an amendment to, that would change that. An amendment to the main motion, but, but as currently framed, I think it would not the, discussion of, of the merits of the two alternatives would not be appropriate.
Thank you, Alan.
You are welcome.
In terms of Boober, one, two, three people, um, limited vocal.
I will, I will sign off if there's nothing else for me on town meeting.
I think that's it. Thank you, Alan.
Thank you very much.
Um, so we have uh limited vocal amplification and no percussion during normal hours of operation. So the request is for Sunday brunch and occasional events. And okay. Um, and just state your name and.
I'm sorry, I have a very low voice.
Okay, that's okay.
Um, and as we're looking for an entertainment license, we had a lot of requests from customers and people out that are looking for something interesting to do on the weekends. Um, we originally were thinking that we would lock that out a Sunday brunch, probably some very light music in the background, and maybe so, maybe lots of loud somebody playing some music in the corner.
Out of curiosity, where would they be?
So I think I would place them with a first speaker and a floor. We would definitely put it somewhere else. That way they're easier for them to enter the room and not go out of the room at the window. They would be more by all the court. But we put on the walls, and that was my thinking, that we'll always go back and do lunch. Um, so that, like even, I wasn't even sure if I needed it if I gave the license for other things small, even like a
Thank you. Um, John, round?
I'm looking forward to it.
Yeah, thank you.
Kathy Bellata?
Good question. Um, Boober has a wonderful open door, you know.
Yeah. Would the doors be open or closed?
Well, it would probably depend on the day. I wouldn't have them open.
You're, yeah, I don't want to disturb.
That's my question. I think if so I'm looking forward to it, um, but I also can hear it from my balcony. Just the neighbors and it's, it's a densely populated area and I would like to see the doors remain closed unless it's going to be a special event. You know, sometimes there are events at the Legion and there are outdoors and that's fine. Not every single weekend night.
But that's, you know, they won't be having any, you know, there, there no percussion, so we're not having drums, anything like that.
No, I'm asking what the procedure is for.
And there is no sound. Really, this was a very unique region, there was draws up.
Right, right.
And we can always revisit. Yeah.
And and I.
Yeah.
It's been a great addition to the neighborhood.
Yep. Brian?
I got nothing.
Anne?
Sounds great.
Okay, no further questions? May I have a motion?
Motion is. To approve the the payment license for Boober.
At twenty-six Central Street. Do we and do we want to have a friendly amendment added to that to flatten end time for the music?
What are one of the current hours?
My license is suspended.
I I I could offer a friendly amendment to just have. If the doors are open, I'd like the music to end by nine. If the doors are, I'm I'm not worried about the doors being closed and playing music till midnight, I'm totally fine with that. But, you know, people may have small children, the dogs can get, who knows? That if the music's playing, I'd like the doors closed at nine or the music stopped at nine, that's.
Brian, would you accept that friendly amendment?
I would accept that.
Okay, moved by Brian, do we have a second? Okay, I will say seconded by Kathy Bellata, roll call vote, John Round?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata? Brian Solace?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes, thank you, looking forward to it.
With bingo or trivia, does that qualify as entertainment? I was just couldn't find my gun at each time, it was a little different.
No, that's. I would say my understanding is that it's it's any performance, whether it's comedians, music. Right, now, may, thank you all. May I have, let's see. Under. A motion to close open meeting to enter into executive session for Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight. Section twenty-one and three to discuss strategy G, strategy with respect to litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect. On the litigating cross position of the public body and the chair so declares without returning to open meeting. So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Anne Harrison, seconded Kathy Bellata, roll call vote, Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Brian Solace?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata? John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. So good night, everybody, and thank you very much.
Town and Newbury.